Welcome to the Akron Town Meeting. This is the first public dialogue in a series. One America, President Clinton's Initiative on Race. On our stage at E.J. Thomas Performing Arts Hall in Akron are 67 residents of our community who have been asked by the President to join him in a conversation on an issue that has too often divided us, the issue of race. A conversation on racial issues must include stories that our stage participants can tell and reflect upon, and a conversation also requires listening. In addition to the nationwide television audience, 1,500 people are listening at Thomas Hall today, and another 5,000 are gathered nearby at the University of Akron's arena. Now this dialogue has room for many stories, candid, personal stories, and different opinions. We begin with a dialogue where there are no right answers. The strength of this conversation will be in its diversity. Our audience in the hall can participate best by not recognizing individual opinions with applause. There is no single point of view that our participants seek to be cheered. We do want to engage as many people on the stage as possible, and I will ask you then to join me at the end of our program in thanking all of our participants.
Ladies and gentlemen, the President of the United States, accompanied by Dr. Marion Rubel.
People of varying races, creeds, and backgrounds, led by the President of the United States, talking about a subject vital to the future success of our nation. The University of Akron is thrilled to host this important event. As a university, we are committed to seeking knowledge and truth, and as any student will tell you, that isn't easy. It takes perseverance and courage. Today, we all come together as students, seeking knowledge from one another and truth about our society. We all are part of a process that with diligence and determination will help us identify our challenges and create solutions together. Through the hard work of the Akron community, our nationally recognized Coming Together Project, and our elected leaders, we begin to take the steps that make our region and our nation a more vibrant and tolerant place to live. Thank you, Mr. President, for beginning your ambitious discussion of race in Akron. Thank you for coming and sharing the concerns and stories of people here. We're proud of the steps we've taken, and we want to join you in leading our nation to a better understanding of what makes us united as a people, our celebration of diversity. Ladies and gentlemen, the President of the United States.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Dr. Rubel, thank you. We're delighted to be here at the University of Akron. I want to thank my good friend Senator John Glenn and your Congressman Tom Sawyer, Congressman Lou Stokes, Congressman Sherrod Brown for being here, and Mayor Dr. Sclally, thank you so much for making Akron so available and for doing all you have to help us. Thank the County Executive Tim Davis and all the people here in Akron who've just been wonderful in helping us to put this together. I also thank the people who are behind me who've agreed to be a part of our panel today and kind of put themselves on the line on behalf of all the rest of you, and I hope on behalf of all Americans, in launching this important dialogue. There are 96 watch sites that have been set up around the country by our regional administrators, constituency groups, and others who will be kind of doing what we're doing here in their own way after they watch us. I'd also like to acknowledge the presence here today of members of our Racial Advisory Board, Dr. John Hope Franklin, our Chair, Linda Chavez Thompson, Reverend Susan Johnson Cook, and Judy Winston, our Executive Director. Ladies and gentlemen, last June at the University of San Diego, I challenged all Americans to join me for at least a year in addressing the enormous challenge of making one America out of all of our racial, ethnic diversity in this country. At the time I did it, a lot of people said, "Well, why is he doing this? We're not having any riots in the cities. Economy's the best it's been in a generation." And my answer was, "That's precisely why I'm doing it now." Because what I have tried to do as your President is to get all of us to think about and work on things that are going to be critical to our future before the wheel runs off. Because if we plan together and work together to make the most of our common future, we can avoid some of the terrible things that have happened in other countries, and we can avoid repeating some of the darker chapters of our own history, and by the way, we can acknowledge that we still have some problems and we need to get them out on the table and deal with them. Now, to me, this is a critical part of the larger challenge of preparing our country to live in the next century. It's not just a new century and a new millennium. There's a whole different world out there in the way we work and learn and live and relate to each other. All of you know that, and I have done my best to pursue a vision that would create opportunity for everybody responsible enough to work for it and to maintain our country's leadership in the global economy and for world peace and security and freedom, to give everybody a chance to be a part of the winner's circle in America. But I know it can't be done unless we recognize the fact that we are rapidly becoming the most diverse and integrated democracy in the world. We have to deal with a lot of the older racial issues that have been with us from the beginning, from the time Africans coming here on slave ships between blacks and whites, from the time of our moving Indian tribes off the land between Native Americans and white Americans, from the time of the war with Mexico between Americans and Mexican Americans, now increasingly enriched and diversified by all the immigrants that have come to America in the 20th century. In the school district that's just across the river from my office in Washington, D.C., there are now students from over 180 different national groups with over 100 different native languages in one school district. We are becoming a very richly multiracial, multi-ethnic society at a time when in the last few years we've read of ethnic and racial hatred and murders and problems and wars from Bosnia to the Middle East to Northern Ireland to Africa to Russia to India, you name it. And we're beating the odds so far with all of our problems. But I think it is very important that we understand that this is something that we have to keep dealing with honestly and openly. There are many people today with whom I have great sympathy who say, "Well, the President shouldn't be talking about race out of context. Most of the problems that minorities have today are problems of economic and educational opportunity that they share with people who aren't in their ethnic group, and what we really need is an affirmative opportunity agenda to create more jobs for all the dispossessed, create more educational opportunities for everybody that doesn't have them." I basically agree with that. I agree with that. But you have only to look at the rest of the world and your own experience to know that in addition to that, there is something unique about racial difference that affects the way people relate to each other in every society in the world. It can be wonderful. It can be truly wonderful. We ought not -- I don't like it when people say we ought to tolerate our differences. I don't buy that. I think we ought to respect and celebrate our differences. Tolerance is the wrong word here. But we also ought to struggle constantly to identify what unites us that's more important than what's different about us, and that's why we're having these Town Hall meetings. Now, let me say, I want to now turn to the people who are here, and I want to ask all of you who won't be talking to carry on this conversation in your mind and all those at the other sites around the country. And when this is over, I want you to go out and do this all over again at work or in any other groups that you're in. Because what we're trying to do here is drop a pebble in the pond and have it reverberate all across America. Because I honestly believe that this is a good country full of good people. There's never been a challenge we've ever faced we haven't been able to overcome, and so I ask all of you to join me and to help us in that. I also would remind you that if we don't speak frankly about what we believe, then when it's over, we won't feel very good. I told our opening speakers, I said, "You've got to imagine that we're at a café downtown sitting around a table drinking coffee together. Forget about the fact that all these people are staring at you and you're on television." You know, don't say this in the way you think it's most proper. Say this, whatever you have to say, in the way you think it's most honest, so that we can move forward together. Again, let me say that this dialogue, to me, is an important part of where we're going. Now, we have responsibilities in Washington, too. There is an economic responsibility. There is an education responsibility. A few weeks ago, I announced that we were going to support scholarships for people who would go out and teach in educationally deprived areas where we needed more teachers. Today, we are releasing a proposal to create educational opportunity zones to reward school districts in poor urban and rural areas who undertake the kind of sweeping reform that Chicago has embraced in the last couple of years, closing down failing schools, promoting public school choice, holding students and teachers accountable, involving parents more, providing opportunities for students who have learning problems to learn, but ending automatic social promotion and giving people high school diplomas that don't mean anything. I think that we should support that sort of thing, and we will do that. We have a policy responsibility. I think we should build on our economic efforts to create an affirmative economic opportunity agenda that crosses racial lines, and the same thing with education, the same thing with health care, the same thing with things like our family and medical leave law that help people balance the demands of work and family. Yes, there is a public responsibility here, but this country in the end rises or falls on the day-to-day activities of its ordinary citizens. Again, let me say that I thank the Racial Advisory Board for the work they have done here. I said that all three of them were here, but I see Governor Winter is also here. We have four of the five members who are here today, and I received a letter from Angela O, the member who could not be here today. Is she here? Oh, hello. How are you? I was told you weren't coming. That makes our board more diverse. That's good. So, we're going to do our part, but I don't want anybody for a moment minimizing the importance of this sort of dialogue. The reason we came to Akron, as was said earlier, in part is because of this Coming Together Project you've done here. And I believe if we can find constructive ways for people to work together, learn together, talk together, be together, that's the best shot we've got to avoid some of the horrible problems we see in the rest of the world, to avoid some of the difficult problems we've had in our own history, and to make progress on the problems that we still have here today. Now, I think it's appropriate that we begin this dialogue with young people. After all, they've got more time in front of them than behind them, and it is their lives that will be most directly affected by this incredible explosion of diversity while we become more integrated into a world of global diversity than the rest of us. So let's begin. Our first student here is McHouston Chambers, and he has an interesting ethnic background himself. I'd like to ask him basically to begin by trying to level with us about what impact, if any, race has on his life and whether he believes it affects any of his relationships with other people and his future prospects in life. McHouston?
My name is McHouston Chambers, and I'm an electrical engineering major at the University of Akron, and I'm also biracial. And I think that the only time race ever comes up in my mind is when I'm reminded of it by other people, just in terms of like experiences where I'm discriminated against or just treated differently because of what I look like. Growing up, growing up in the early days, I really didn't have much experience with this, but later when I got to high school, I transferred to a private high school, and I think that it seemed like every day that people would, you know, make some kind of comment or they would say something that would just keep the pressure on you and keep you tense and keep you stressed that was, I think, is unnecessary. Different experiences I've had, like I've been to banks where I've given them a check to deposit from my mother, and, you know, I mean, it was a pretty, you know, pretty low sum of money, and I've given it to them and they put holds on them unnecessarily, and I've seen them talking to people, you know, calling on the telephone, and just it really seems like sometimes that people only realize half of who I am, and they only realize, they only think about what I look like, that I'm just basically the stereotypical things other than I'm an educated person.
Our second student, Jonathan Morgan. Jonathan Morgan. What do you think about what he said? Do you think there's still discrimination in here at this school or in this community here in the country? And do you think that most people want to live in an integrated society?
Yeah, I do honestly think that there's still discrimination in this country to a point. There are a lot of prejudiced people out there that still remain, and I, my own honest opinion about that is that those people are the older people, the older generations, 30s, 40s, 50s, and up. I'm not saying all of them are.
Maybe we need a panel on ageism instead of race.
I apologize.
That makes it worse. Don't do that.
You're right.
But the main thing I'm getting at is, I mean, I can look over at McEwen and I can say, "He's my friend. He's a fellow student here at the University of Akron, and we have something in common." Whereas maybe someone older and just might have preconceived prejudices that just haven't been ironed out yet, and I think it has been ironed out in our generation.
Do you think it's because of personal experiences? Do you think it's because you've had more direct personal experience with people from different age groups? Or do you think it's because you grew up in a different time where the climate, the legal and the political and the social climate was different?
I think it's because I grew up in a different time. We grew up watching television. The Cosby Show is my favorite show.
So therefore, if you worked at a bank and a black person came in with a check, you wouldn't necessarily think it ought to be hell because you saw Bill Cosby and he was a good role model. No, this is not bad. This is important. No, no, this is important.
Yeah, I don't think I would give him a hard time, but at the same time, I have my own prejudices. Whereas if I'm walking downtown on a street and I see a black man walking towards me that's not dressed as well, I might be a little bit scared. So, I mean, at the same time, I have those prejudices.
And do you think that's because of television crime shows or because of your personal experience?
Would have nothing to do with my personal experience, just from the media, television shows, and things that I have heard.
Christina Ibarra, what do you think about that? Do you believe that attitudes are better among young people? Do you think that there is still discrimination today? Is it worse for African-Americans than it is for other minority groups? Is it different? What do you think?
Yes, I do agree that there is still a lot of discrimination. I do feel that it is in younger adults as well as older, but I do feel that that occurs simply because of how people were raised. Getting back to what John said, yes, I feel that older people do tend to discriminate more and maybe base their stereotypes of people rather than getting to know them, and I feel that people our age do that as well until they do go out in the world and they do experience different people. And I know a lot of people who, until they came to college, until they came to Akron, were brought up very prejudiced and did have very prejudiced beliefs, but until they came here and they had classes with different minorities and they realized that we as people didn't fit so many stereotypes that they had thought that we would, that they got to know us as people and that realized that minorities as well as, you know, white people could interact and they could be friends and they could be one, and that there are very many similarities between us all. We are all people, and that's how I feel.
So do you believe, let me ask you this, do you believe that having an integrated educational environment is the primary reason that young people have better attitudes, more open attitudes than older people because they've been able to go to school with people of different races?
I feel that that benefits them, but I feel it's all by choice as well. Older people obviously interact with other minorities in everyday life as well. It's just a matter of choice whether you're going to allow them to accept, whether you're going to allow yourself to accept these people into your lives or whether you're not. I feel it's all choice.
Let me ask you just one other question, and I want to go on to, back to our moderators here to talk about the next group of folks. There's a big difference even in college campuses between the racial composition of the student body and the daily lives of the students, at least in a lot of places. That is, there are a lot of places where the student body is integrated, but social life is largely segregated. Is that always a bad thing? Is it, what about that? What about that here? And what do you think about that? Our institutions of worship are largely segregated on Sunday. Is that a bad thing or not? Is it a good thing? What should be our, in other words, one of the things that I want to try to get America to think about is, how do we define success here? I don't personally think it's a bad thing that there's, that people in many ways like to be with other people of their own racial and ethnic group any more than their own religious group, but on the other hand, it could become a very bad thing if it goes too far, as we've seen in other countries. So how do, how do you know whether the environment is working for you and for other people? How much integration is enough? How much, what kind of segregation is acceptable if it's voluntary? How do you, how do you deal with all that? Have you ever thought about it in that way? Go ahead.
Well, I basically think that, you know, once people come to, say, university, that they, most of the time, it's a new place, and I think that when people go to a new place, they're going to stick, they're going to try and find people like them. Now, in my case, I grew up in a predominantly white area and went to white high schools and stuff like that, so I think that when I came to the university, I sought the other side of my ethnic background. So I don't think, I do think that when people get together with people of their own ethnic background or religion, I think that that is good, but I don't think that, I think that you should also respect the other people and try and learn and be forced to learn about the other people as well as yourself and your own background.
I believe that you can measure success just by equality. I think that certain segregation is okay. If people feel more comfortable with their own race, then that's fine, as well as you don't put down other races, and I think that that's how you would be able to measure success. Whether you hang out with different races all the time or sometime or no, you know, no time at all, I think that that's okay as long as you can accept these other people and not feel that you're any more superior than anybody else. And I feel Akron is very segregated. I think that there are certain parts of the campus where, you know, white people hang out here and black people hang out here and in our student center as well as our athletic events, and, you know, and as a Hispanic and coming from a Mexican background, where does that put me? I'm neither one. So I just have friends of, you know, both, which I'm very fortunate, but that's kind of an awkward situation as well, and if, you know, students could come together more and integrate more, I think that that would be better.
Mr. President, we are joined today by three authors who you've invited, whose books on race are now being the subject of a national debate. David K. Shipler is a former reporter for The New York Times. His book on Arabs and Jews won the Pulitzer Prize. His book today is A Country of Strangers: Black and White in America. Dr. Abigail Thunstrom, a senior fellow at the Manhattan Institute, has co-authored America in Black and White: One Nation Indivisible with her husband Stephen, the Winthrop Professor of History at Harvard, and Dr. Beverly Daniel Tatum, a psychologist, educator, professor at Mount Holyoke College in South Hadley, Massachusetts. Her book is Why Are All the Black Kids Sitting Together in the Cafeteria and Other Conversations About Race?
I'd like to just start very briefly by giving the authors a chance to comment on how, what they've heard from these students today meshes with what they heard when they were preparing their recent books. And David, maybe we ought to start with you.
It's very familiar. I spent about five years traveling the country, talking to young people like these and others, adults, ordinary folks, blacks and whites primarily, about their interactions with each other, and I feel that we're in a different phase of race relations in this country than we used to be, and in some ways, it's a more complicated phase. Bigotry, for the most part, is not as blatant and obvious and outrageous as it used to be. A lot of it has gone underground. It takes subtler forms, encrypted forms. Prejudice is a shape-shifter. It's very agile in taking forms that seem acceptable on the surface. Just yesterday in Akron, for example, The Beacon Journal had a very interesting article discussing the reasons why blacks are underrepresented in honors courses in the public schools here, and one of the reasons seems to be that some guidance counselors discourage blacks from enrolling by saying to them, "This is very difficult, you know. Are you sure you can do the work?" And some black students absorb these images of themselves as less intelligent or less competent. The fewer blacks that are in honors courses, the fewer blacks want to be. It becomes uncomfortable. There's some peer pressure against it. This image of blacks as less capable is a powerful one that still lurks under the surface of America. I met a white couple in California, for example, who adopted a biracial girl, and she was never, she was allowed to drift in high school. To the teachers, she looked black. Her friends were mostly black. Their biological children, who were white, got lots of attention. When they fell behind, teachers were on the phone, sending notes home, but when the daughter, who looked black, fell behind, there were no notes, no phone calls. It was as close to a laboratory experiment as you could get in the differences in attitudes and expectations. Now, these teachers were not wearing white hoods. They were not standing in the schoolhouse door borrowing integration. They came from the mainstream of white America, which still harbors many of these powerful assumptions. I think for us as white Americans to understand some of this, we have to reflect on the differences and experiences that we've had as opposed to those that blacks and other minorities have had. One of the things that I learned as I was working on A Country of Strangers is how little I understood and perhaps how little I still understand about this. Toward the end of my research, I attended a workshop in Washington run by a facilitator named Les Manois, who asked a group of us, and it was quite a diverse group, blacks, Latinos, Asians, whites, to answer certain questions by either standing or remaining seated. One of the questions actually goes to what you had said earlier. He said, "I don't have to worry that a check or a credit card will be refused because of my race if you agree with that stamp." The only people in the room who stood were the whites, and he left us standing there looking at each other and at the others for a long time. And he left us standing there, looking at each other and at the others for a long time. He said, "I've been stopped by police officers because of my race." And the black men stood and a few black women, none of the whites. "I can expect that the next president of the United States will be of my race or ethnic group." And again, only we whites were able to stand. And then he asked a very powerful question that I had never thought to ask in all my research. "I have considered not having children because of racism." And the young African-American woman sitting near me rose to her feet as gracefully as if she were at a funeral. And she looked down at me and I looked up at her. And we realized that we were looking at each other across an enormous chasm of different experiences. I think in a dialogue of this kind, the key is to listen, not just to talk. Because we talk a lot and we talk pretty well about discourage blacks from enrolling by saying to them, "This is very difficult, you know. Are you sure you can do the work?" And some black students absorb these images of themselves as less intelligent or less competent. The fewer blacks that are in honors courses, the fewer blacks want to be. It becomes uncomfortable. There's some peer pressure against it. This image of blacks as less capable is a powerful one that still lurks under the surface of America. I met a white couple in California, for example, who adopted a biracial girl. And she was never, she was allowed to drift in high school. To the teachers, she looked black. Her friends were mostly black. Their biological children, who were white, got lots of attention. When they fell behind, teachers were on the phone, sending notes home. But when the daughter, who looked black, fell behind, there were no notes, no phone calls. It was as close to a laboratory experiment as you could get in the differences in attitudes and expectations. Now, these teachers were not wearing white hoods. They were not standing in the schoolhouse door barring integration. They came from the mainstream of white America, which still harbors many of these powerful assumptions. I think for us as white Americans to understand some of this, we have to reflect on the differences and experiences that we've had as opposed to those that blacks and other minorities have had. And one of the things that I learned as I was working on A Country of Strangers is how little I understood and perhaps how little I still understand about this. Toward the end of my research, I attended a workshop in Washington run by a facilitator named Les Manois, who asked a group of us, and it was quite a diverse group, blacks, Latinos, Asians, whites, to answer certain questions by either standing or remaining seated. And one of the questions actually goes to what you had said earlier. He said, "I don't have to worry that a check or a credit card will be refused because of my race if you, if you agree with that stand." And the only people in the room who stood were the whites. And he left us standing there, looking at each other and at the others for a long time. He said, "I've been stopped by police officers because of my race." And the black men stood and a few black women, none of the whites. "I can expect that the next president of the United States will be of my race or ethnic group." And again, only we whites were able to stand. And then he asked a very powerful question that I had never thought to ask in all my research. "I have considered not having children because of racism." And the young African-American woman sitting near me rose to her feet as gracefully as if she were at a funeral. And she looked down at me and I looked up at her. And we realized that we were looking at each other across an enormous chasm of different experiences. I think in a dialogue of this kind, the key is to listen, not just to talk. Because we talk a lot and we talk pretty well about race, but we don't listen about it. And I'm hoping that if we listen to each other, we can begin to diminish the size of that chasm and perhaps even make this society of ours into less and less of a country of strangers.
Well, let me just briefly, first of all, thank you very much. But the reason that I wanted to do this and a lot of these things is that I believe there are, in any given community, literally millions of instances like this where we're not ever fully aware of the motivations behind what we do. Or where other people will perceive there may be a racial motivation where there isn't one, which is also just as bad because you have the same net bottom line result, which is the drifting apart of people. And I don't think there is any legal policy answer to this. I think that, you know, this is something we've really got to work our way through. Jonathan, I was really proud of you for saying that, that if you were walking, in spite of Bill Cosby and everything, all your classmates, if you were walking down the street alone at night and you saw a man, a black man coming at you and you were better dressed than he was, you might be scared. Because that's a pretty gutsy thing for you to admit, but that's the kind of stuff we got to get out on the table. We need to get this out. And I, but just parenthetically, David, I had a, a group of African-American journalists in to see me a couple of months ago. Every journalist, all of them with college degrees, all of them quite successful, every single man in the crowd had been stopped by a police officer for no apparent reason. Everyone, 100% of them, I asked. So these are things we have to get out there and discuss. Abigail.
Well, I, the first-
She has a rosier view and I hope she's got the guts to say it out here now. We didn't even, come on.
I definitely have the guts to say it. In fact, all sorts of reporters said to me before I came, "You're going to fudge." I said, "I never fudge." And indeed, I won't talk immediately about preferences, but I, one of the reasons certainly I was invited here is because I am a dissenting voice on preferences. I do not like any racial preferences or racial classifications, the boxes in which we're all put in. I hope we can return a little bit to that. But let me, let me say in response to the, these wonderful voices of the students, I, I think they reaffirm the picture of progress that we provide overwhelming evidence of in our book, America in Black and White. I mean, black progress is indisputably here to stay. Growth of the, of a significant black middle class, increasing suburbanization, rising homeownership rates and so forth. This is a train that left the station 50 years ago and there is no going in to reverse. I mean, just think, in 1940, 60% of employed black women were domestic servants. Today, 60% of black women are white collar workers and 2% are domestic help. As late as 1964, the year the Civil, Great Civil Rights Act was passed, only 20% of whites had black neighbors. Today, 61% of whites have black neighbors. I mean, despair in this country has become very fashionable, but the truth is that ordinary Americans, black and white, are living together, they're working together, they're dining together, they're forming interracial friendships, they're dating members of the other race and increasing, and in small but rapidly increasing numbers, they are marrying across racial lines. America is outgrowing its racial past and these students are the voice of, of that fact. I mean, there's a recent poll showing that nearly nine out of 10 black teenagers say that racism is a negligible factor in their law, in their daily lives. The young have come of age, they understand the good of age, the good news, they've come of age in a transformed nation. There are absolutely wonderful other figures showing that in terms of the percentage of blacks who say they have dated a white, it turns out to be 39%. This percentage of whites who say they have dated someone who is black, it turns out to be 24%. Asked this year, teenagers asked this year about dating, only 13% in this country say they would never date somebody of another race. And 83% of whites approve of interracial marriage. It is perfectly right that there are generational differences. They don't start, however, as young as 35. But when you see, when you see evidence of bigotry, it is mostly the older people. And this is, this is a nation that's trans, that is being transformed. Of course, real racial inequality still persists. And I think much of it is driven by an appalling and unacceptable racial gap in educational performance. And I love what you're doing in taking Chicago as a model and, you know, dedicating the federal government to this. I would go much further in terms of radical educational reform. Let me say just one last thing. We also need, if we're going to move forward on the racial front, we need to recapture our confidence in ourselves. In my lifetime, America has undergone an unprecedented transformation. We have changed from a nation in which one region resembled South Africa under apartheid to one in which Martin Luther King's dream of a racial equality has become, in his widow's words, deeply embedded in the fabric of America. Dr. King and the entire civil rights movement understood our capacity for change. It's time to recapture their optimism, their faith in America. This is a good country, as you just said. Thanks.
Thank you. Let me, let me just say, I, I believe that it's a lot better. I grew up in the segregated South, so I have personal experience of what, how it's changed since I'm one of those older people Jonathan talked about. I've actually gotten kind of used to it now. But to me, that makes this effort all the more important because what, what I want the American people to do is to have confidence. We know now we can make our economy work. We know now we can have the crime rate go down. We know now we can actually reduce the number of people on welfare and have more people at work. We know things that we didn't know just a few years ago. And we do know we can make progress on, on the, this whole complex of issues. But I think it's also important to point out that there is a lot of residue there, like what you, like what McHouston told a little backstory. And that, that progress should give us energy for the work ahead, not put us into denial about it. That's the only thing that I, I want to make sure we, we don't do. Go ahead, Beverly. What would you like to say about this?
Well, I would agree that there has been progress, but also that there's still a lot of work to do. And when I talk to my students at Mount Holyoke College, where I teach a course on the psychology of racism, my students talk, which is in a very racially mixed context, talk a lot about their own fears, their own difficulties, even to engage in this kind of dialogue. I think the opportunity to talk about these issues is really important, but what I hear from my students is that there are very few opportunities that they've had in their pre-college experience and even sometimes in their college context to really talk honestly about these issues. There's a lot of fear about that, you know? I think that there's fear on the part of white people to speak honestly about the, the things that they've learned. I also want to applaud Jonathan's honesty about the misinformation that we've all gotten. It's not just white people who take in negative messages about people of color, but we all get misinformed about people different from ourselves. Or as I like to say, we get misinformation on people like ourselves as well. And in that context, we internalize that information, we act on it as we've been hearing. But when we try to create spaces for people to talk about it, it's very difficult. I find, I, not only do I work with students, but I also work with public school educators in a professional development course, which is specifically focused on trying to help those educators feel more comfortable talking about racial issues, understand them, how they may manifest in schools, and how they can talk about them with their students. Because there's a lot of silence about these issues and I think breaking the silence is something that many people are afraid of doing. And yet, we can't, as you pointed out, we can't really fix this problem or continue the improvement unless we're able to really engage in honest dialogue about that and get past the fear. And I've talked about the fact that white people are fearful, but also I think people of color, black, Latino, Asian, Native, students certainly in my classes will say, you know, "Part of my fear is that I'll tell my story, I'll talk about being in the bank or I'll talk about, you know, feeling isolated on the campus where I, where I am." And it's going to fall on deaf ears, you know, that I'll open up wounds that will be hard to speak about and that people will say, "Oh, it wasn't that bad" or, you know, "You're exaggerating." Or that somehow that experience is going to be invalidated, in which case the person speaking wonders, "Was it worth the effort? You know, did it really matter that I came and talked about this experience if it hasn't been received in a way that moves people to take some action about it?" So I think the, the point that's been made by David about listening is very important as well, that we all have to be willing to take that leap of faith, I think, to, to take some, to risk some discomfort because these conversations are not comfortable usually. And we should just anticipate that. And that sometimes we do say things that are offensive to others, not because we want to, but because we've been breathing in that smog. You know, as I like to say, if you breathe in enough smog, occasionally you're going to cough some up, you know? And that we are all smog breathers in that way. But that it is possible for us to engage in this kind of honest dialogue if we're willing to take the risk to do it. So I think it's wonderful that all these people have gathered here for that purpose.
Abigail.
Say a, a further word on the optimism front. Those of us who are optimistic and indeed those of us who are against racial preferences, we're not naive. We do not think that America has become colorblind, that we've solved our racial problems, that racism has disappeared. I mean, only fools believe that. And yet, I'm often accused of thinking that. It is said, "Well, you're against preferences, you must think this country has solved these problems." Of course, I don't think that. We have a long ways to go. Nevertheless, if we go on the basis of optimism, we'll get there. Pessimism is incredibly self-destructive.
I agree with that. If I could just make one other point on, I'll call on David. One reason I think this, all this talking business is more important than ever before is that if you posit the fact, let's just, if you look at the growth in educational attainment, in the growth of the middle class among African-Americans or, you can say, "Well, things have gotten a lot better." And then if you identify what the continuing problems are, like what McHouston just said about, you know, in the examples David cited, you can say, "These things require changes in human perception, human heart, you've got to have more talking." I think the thing that, that's, it's more profound is when you look at these communities that have, there, there are several counties in America with people with more than 100 different racial and ethnic groups now. So, and, and they're all different in many ways. They have different perceptions and different cultural patterns. And I know after the Los Angeles riots, I went out and walked the streets and I was so stunned by the gulf between Korean grocers and their African-American customers. And I've been in other cities where there were Arab-American merchants and, and their Hispanic customers that are African-American customers. All these things are proliferating. That's the kind of thing that, that you see eating other countries alive from the inside out. And that's why we have to begin to deal with this because a lot of you got to bring the insights you have from your own, not only personal, but historic experiences to bear on a whole different America. And it's, it's a new thing out there where there's somebody from every place out there with a family and a community and a culture and a set of perceptions that they will bring to bear on all their interactions. Go ahead, David.
And there are a lot of good people, as you said earlier, working on this. They don't get much publicity, though. The press, and I was an old newspaper man, even though I'm no longer a newspaper man, I feel free to criticize the press a bit on this. You know, the press tends to, to go to the extremes and, and report the, the most strident voices. But I, I ran a lot, across a lot of people who were working quietly, without publicity, in their jobs, in their communities, to overcome racial problems. So I think that this dichotomy that some people have set up between optimism and pessimism is a false dichotomy. Optimism is too close to complacency. Pessimism is too close to resignation. Neither of those categories fits the racial situation now. Things are getting better. Things have gotten better. Things are getting worse at the same time.
Mr. President, to widen the circle of the debate and to illustrate Mr. Shipler's point about the quiet work going on, to continue the dialogue focuses very directly on the most segregated hour in America, it has been said on Sunday morning. You have two pastors before you, Reverend Newt Larson, pastor of the chapel in Akron, and the Reverend Ronald Fowler, pastor of the Arlington Church of God. Each of them have experiences to share along these lines. Reverend Larson, your background and your input into this.
Yes, very, very white. Our passion is that people of faith, which are many Americans, will apply that so clearly taught. I grew up in a church where we, we talked about all, all the things of love and reconciliation. My dad was one of the kindest men I ever met when we'd go to the Hershey Bears game and sit way up, it would be a nigger heaven. And it wasn't until I was older that I thought how awful some of the things that were side issues were. And visiting as a pastor once with a man from our church to an African-American home as we left, he, he thanked me that I treated them as regular people. And that was when I woke up that I've got to do something. My friendship with Pastor Fowler has been the best thing in the world for me.
Mr. President, it's been a mutual friendship. And one of the things that I can remember growing up, both in a rural as well as an urban setting, was that the community was predominantly African-American. The families were very stable, we had our problems, but we lived every day dealing with racial issues. And, and part of my positive experience is being rescued- And part of my positive experience is being rescued from a drowning experience by a white person. Now, that experience gave me an outlook, a view of life, that has literally transformed my whole life, the way I respond to issues. I have to differ in part with our noted author in that part of what we've always dealt with in the black community is that whites have always had affirmative action. They've always had preferential treatment. Trying to level that playing ground sometimes is made to seem not working in the interest of all Americans, because some people get disadvantaged as a result. I think we do need to talk about how to do it fairly, so that we continue to provide incentives for all the people to continue to do what the Bill of Rights did for soldiers coming back from that Second World War, gave them opportunities. Minorities need that. Much of what we have seen as success is not because we've been intentional in bringing about one America. It's happened in spite of us. And part of what Pastor Larson and I have been trying to say is how could we be intentional in creating a relationship, an atmosphere, in which we could be free to talk about racial issues and getting people to dialogue about it, so that we can keep crossing boundaries and building bridges?
Let me ask you something. What impact has your relationship had on the people in your churches? I mean, it's all very, well, you know, preachers are supposed to do the right thing. I mean, come on. What impact has it had on people in your churches?
It's been good, only for those who get intentional and do something. And as our chief leader, we urge you to keep modeling it and every leader in America. The best thing that happens is not legislation, but because we've stood together and expressed our love to each other and spend time together, it's got to be intentional. Anybody in both churches has followed, and I always kid, too, that our church is teaching theirs how to sing, and that's a help.
Mr. President, our church needs a lot of help in learning how to sing. We've never done country music well.
You'll probably get a wire from Charlie Pride this afternoon.
We love Charlie. We sent Charlie to help him out. But seriously, Mr. President, one of the things in terms of helping people, I think we both have been amazed, how, call it catching the spirit, whatever you want to label, you want to put on that, our modeling, our relationship, our talking about it, our creating forms in which people could study together about racial issues, celebrate it in worship experience, come together in friendship settings in homes, I think has created a climate of acceptance and created an inclusive spirit, that now we see others who are doing it, business partners who are doing it. There are other organizations in this city, that's why Akron is so unique, beyond just what we're doing, that's doing that same thing.
Let me ask you just one other question, and we'll go to the next group. I'll be the cynic now, just for purposes of argument. I'll say, "Okay, this is really nice. You've got two churches, and you pray on Sunday, and everybody's nice to each other, and you make fun about each other's music." And I know which is the real beneficiary here, that's okay. We do all that kind of stuff. How's it changing these people's lives? How's it changing the life in Akron? How does it result in less discrimination in the workplace or in the school, or people helping each other to succeed in school or at work? Can you give us any examples about what it's done, other than make people feel good for an hour on Sunday or some other church event?
I can tell you about lives being changed as a result of it. And there have been persons in our congregation who, when we first announced that we were going to walk together as brothers, you know, said, "Fine, go pastor, you know, you've been idealistic and you're visionary, you know, good." But they didn't want to join in the parade toward inclusiveness. I watched those persons changed and become deeply involved and allies, is what we call our partnership between our two churches. I think that is not insignificant. I think what we model, and as we go around and discuss race relations, you know, throughout this community, that's not insignificant. I think people are becoming more civil in the dialogue. That is a value that I think we need to cherish and deeply prize, because in the celebration of our differences, we do need to be able to come together and say, you know, "I kind of disagree," without saying, "You're racist because of that," so that persons can find the freedom to talk about the issues that deeply affect them.
It's a big issue, by the way, having people feel free to disagree with people of different races without having somebody draw a racial inference. That's a huge thing. That's one of the benchmarks when you know you're getting where you need to be.
And you only get there by listening. And the people that have taken the classes together and spent weeks and socials and our time together, once or twice a month at least, and in between, that changes your heart. And then when you connect that with what you say you believe, only you see how it works out. It's terrific. So the ones who intentionally do it, and that's why we're having a town meeting to call more people to do that, they get helped.
Mr. President, struggling with interracial relationships is something that many of our students have experience with. Erica Wright, please. Erica, would you explain sort of your thoughts on that?
Erica Wright is over there. But I've been involved in a white school, I've been in a white school all of my life, and sometimes I feel like I live in two different worlds. When I go to school, I'm the only. I'm the only one in my government class, I'm the only one in my English class. And sometimes I feel the burden to speak for all of black America, and slowly, I'm helping my classmates realize that I'm not all of black America. I'm Erica, and my opinion is completely different than Pastor Fowler's and Erica Wright's. And yet, when I go to church and when I go home, I'm part of the every. And I think that that's weird. I think I almost speak two different languages when I'm in the two different communities. And I think that that's one thing that black America struggles with, how to be just you all the time in whatever community that you're in. And I think once people realize that Erica is just Erica, Erica's not the spokesperson for black America at Talmadge High School, I think that's when the progress can be made.
Erica Wright.
I agree totally with Erica Sanders. I don't really deal on hand, you know what I'm saying, racism towards me, but I see it every day. I agree with the gentleman down there about the age thing, you know, but since we can't get rid of everyone over 30, you know, that it really, you know what I'm saying, it really plays a part. And like, the media does play a part on us and with us, and so does, you know, our peers, but I think the most important is our parents, because we learn from my parent, my mom and my father are my guides for me. I look at them and I follow their footsteps, you know, and it's like, whatever our parents tell us, or, you know, whatever we've learned and grown with is what we're going to go for, what we're going to go after. But then, you know, you come in contact with the media and with your peers, and they're saying, "Do this and do that," but then it's you as an individual to make a choice, you know, what you want to do in life, and how you want to react, and how you want to solve the racism or prejudice problem you have today.
Let me ask the microphone to be passed to DJ Beatty, right down here. DJ has grown up in a multiracial household and is a student at the University of Akron.
Yeah, I was adopted by a white family, John and Linda Beatty in Cleveland, and they have one biological son, Steve, who's white, and they adopted two sisters who are biological sisters who are black. And then we also had two foreign exchange students stay with us, Yvonne Reyes from Dominican Republic, and Alejandra from Chile. And my godparents have two Korean daughters, Heather and Lynn, so it's, I don't think you can find too many families more diverse than that. What's interesting about my family is, is that although I was taken out of the black community, my father, throughout my childhood, was always, always interacting with urban blacks, the black middle class, from his college days. He was an assistant pastor up at Harlem, New York City, 1963, 1964. And I was never taught that black was bad. We always went to a black church maybe once a year, and it was only once a year, but it was the effort. So it's like I'm in a white social circle, but politically and socially, my views are way on the other side of the fence with most of my white friends. We're not at all on the same wavelength. Like, we may listen to the same music, we wear the same clothes, we go to the same places, but if we start talking anything that has to do with public policy, my views are much more in line with, you know, the black liberal point of view. Although, when you're taken out of the black community, you're supposed to be more white, more conservative, and that is just not the case for me.
Why do you think white people are more conservative than black people?
Well, I've discussed this with a lot of people. It's economics. To solve the race problem, you're going to have to deal with the poverty problem. And when most whites are dealing with banks and private financial institutions, and a large percentage of blacks are dealing with public assistance, you're going to have different points of view. And, you know, I think that her, I kind of agree with Mrs. Thernstrom on some things, but I still think she's, when she says that, you know, how the black middle class came about, if you take Lyndon Johnson and the Great Society out of that equation, you know, we're going to be, we're going to be so far behind. And if you take, it was activist government, it was a social, 1964. And I was never taught that black was bad. We always went to a black church maybe once a year, and it was only once a year, but it was the effort. So it's like I'm in a white social circle, but politically and socially, my views are way on the other side of the fence with most of my white friends. We're not at all on the same wavelength. Like, we may listen to the same music, we wear the same clothes, we go to the same places, but if we start talking anything that has to do with public policy, my views are much more in line with, you know, the black liberal point of view. Although, when you're taken out of the black community, you're supposed to be more white, more conservative, and that is just not the case for me.
Why do you think white people are more conservative than black people?
Well, I've discussed this with a lot of people. It's economics. To solve the race problem, you're going to have to deal with the poverty problem. And when most whites are dealing with banks and private financial institutions, and a large percentage of blacks are dealing with public assistance, you're going to have different points of view. And, you know, I think that her, I kind of agree with Mrs. Thernstrom on some things, but I still think she's, when she says that, you know, how the black middle class came about, if you take Lyndon Johnson and the Great Society out of that equation, you know, we're going to be, we're going to be so far behind. And if you take, it was activist government, it was a social movement that put the pressure on the policymakers, it was innovative policies. I mean, if people didn't march, you wouldn't have the Public Accommodations Act.
I agree with that, but let me say, let me make the more sophisticated argument against affirmative action. Let's just deal with that in a minute. Hardly anybody thinks that we shouldn't have laws against discrimination on the books. And some people think they should be on the books but not enforced, so I've had a hard time getting Congress to give me the money to clean out the backlog of the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission. But nonetheless, everybody, just about, there's almost literally over 80% of the people in America, if you took a poll, would say, "We should enforce the existing civil rights laws against discrimination." Now, then the question is, what affirmative steps are necessary to really give everybody an equal chance and hopefully to reduce ultimately the racial disparities in income and educational level and all these other things? The argument against affirmative action is partly that it doesn't even work, that basically the main beneficiaries of it have been middle-class minorities who were well-educated and could tap into it, and that what we really need to do is to go back to Lyndon Johnson's other emphasis and have an economics-based social program that offers better educational opportunity to everybody, offers more job opportunities to everybody, and tries to get rid of the dramatically increasing economic disparity of the last 20 years. This is a very important point, the difference in, for all you younger people in my generation, that after World War II, until the mid-'70s, all America grew together. And in fact, the poorest Americans actually had their income increased by a slightly higher percentage than the wealthiest Americans. Then for about 20 years, because of the globalization of the economy, the loss of manufacturing jobs, the rise of service jobs, the rise in importance of education, what happened was the people in the upper 20%, their incomes rose like crazy for 20 years. The people in the bottom 40% were stagnant or dropping, more education-related than anything else, but had something to do with where people lived and what their connections and ties were. So there's a lot of argument that basically, that affirmative action has gotten in trouble for two reasons. One is it's not really answering the problem, that's the real problem, which is the economic problem. The other is that people believe that if someone gets something based on their race, then someone is losing something, someone's not, it's a zero-sum game, someone is losing out who otherwise would have gotten an opportunity which they're entitled. Now, I don't subscribe to this, you know, I believe that you can have properly tailored affirmative action programs which can command broad majority support. We'll get back to that if you want. But I just think that, there is no question, however, that the biggest problems that minorities have in this country today are problems that are shared with disadvantaged white people, too. Access to education, access to jobs, and that we've got to find a way somehow to talk to each other and to work on this, so that we're coming together. And I think that's what you're trying to say, but I'd like to hear you talk a little bit about that and the affirmative action thing, and then maybe you want to open it up to some other people.
Well, about the class issue, I agree that there's a rising tide of classism in America, and what I want to, but it goes together with the race issue. Like, if I'm black, a lot of people can assume that I'm poor, you know, because precon, you know, they have stereotypes, but if someone is white, they can hide their economic state of reality. A poor white person can dress up, he could go to the mall, he can put an outfit on, and he can look like he's middle-class. I can't change the color of my skin. He could get into another social group that I may not be able to, because I can't change the color of my skin. And I agree 100% with George, Governor George Woinovich's position on affirmative action, shifting it to a class debate, but once again, it becomes a partisan debate, because his party is just systematically chopping the government down. And if we're going to help people on class, we're going to need some policies, you know, so you can't say, "Let's help someone," and then...
Let me just, no, no, I agree with what you said, but let me, let me, I don't mean that. I mean, I agree with what you said. We have actually seen some evidence in the last two years that inequality may be declining again for the first time in 20 years, that incomes are rising, after-tax incomes are rising for the bottom 40%, and maybe in a way that will not only cause incomes to rise for the first time in 20 years for that group of people relative to inflation, but to diminish inequality a little. And we've had a strategy of changing the tax system, changing the investment incentives, increasing educational opportunity, giving more, spending a lot more money to help retrain people who lose their jobs, that I think are contributing to that. So I think the real issue is, although we haven't done nearly as much as I'd like to, and we're going to work on it some more, the real issue is, if you had a, to use the modern jargon, a class-based affirmative opportunity agenda, not race-based, but class-based, which might disproportionately benefit minorities, if they were disproportionately poor, for example, or disproportionately isolated, or disproportionately in bad school, if you had that, would there still be an argument for any kind of affirmative action admissions policies to various colleges and universities, or any kind of affirmative action problems when it comes to government contracting, because there are so few African-Americans in certain kinds of businesses? I think that's the question. I want to let you go on a call on some more people, but I think that's really the nub of the affirmative action debate. If you get rid of the politics politically and substantively, you'll help more people and build more unity by having an economic basis for social policy now.
Mr. President, Anna Arroyo has thought about this, and she, for her, it is very real, because she is now a pre-med student at the University of Akron. Anna Arroyo.
Yeah, hi. As you were saying before, I'm a pre-med student here. I've dealt with the issue of race a lot. I'm Puerto Rican, but because I'm white, many people have considered me as being white or assumed that I am white. And when I tell them I'm Puerto Rican, I get treated differently, I feel, than I would have if I just let that preconceived notion of me being white stay. I agree with a lot of what's been said today, and I feel that the only way that anything could be changed is that people get rid of those preconceived notions and start accepting people for what they are. and start accepting people for what they are and who they are, and not necessarily what their race is. What I've been seen as being white hasn't really affected me that much because I haven't let it. But one of the problems is, for me, is that when I tell people I'm Puerto Rican, they wonder why I'm not like Rosie Perez or anybody like that. Why don't I speak like her? Why don't I act like her? Why don't I look like her? People have to get rid of those preconceived notions and realize that Puerto Ricans and Hispanics in general are a wide range of people. They're not just dark-skinned or light-skinned. They're a mixture of things. And once people begin to realize that there is this mixture and accept it, then things could actually occur and things can get better.
Let me ask you a question. Do you believe that most non-Hispanics understand the real difference between Puerto Ricans and Mexican-Americans, for example?
Actually, no. I'm taking a Latin America class right now for World Civ, and I always get comments on, "Oh, wow, that's gonna be an easy A for you." What people don't understand is that I'm Puerto Rican. I'm not Bolivian, I'm not Peruvian, I'm not Mexican. I don't understand their culture. I don't know their culture. I'm not part of their culture. I'm Puerto Rican, and all I know is Puerto Rico. And that's why I was taking the class. And that's what people need to understand, that just because I'm Hispanic or I'm Latin doesn't mean I know everything about Latin America or other Hispanic countries. And that's something that definitely needs to be understood.
Let me ask you to pass the microphone down to Jason Kessler. Jason also has a point of view that he'd like to share about the same issue. Jason's a student here at the university as well.
Mr. President, one thing I've talked with DJ about, we're really good friends, and we've talked about the class issue. And in all due respect to the two ministers down here, one thing I have found by coming from my experiences back home is that there are religions out there teaching that poor is bad, no matter what your color. And when they're teaching this, that if you're poor, you are going to hell. And if you are rich, you are going to heaven. That is creating a notion into a lot of people that because that person's poor, we shouldn't interact with them. And I really feel that could be one of the biggest problems today.
Let me push this a little more. They don't really do that, and what they really act like is that if you're poor, it's your own fault, right?
In a way, and it's like a sign that God is putting something bad on you. At least, maybe this is just an isolated incidence, but I have come in contact with this. That this is a sign from God that because you're poor, you are going to hell.
Mr. President, Vanessa Cordero is the coordinator of the Family Violence Program and has been very much an activist in Latino rights.
I wanna thank you for inviting me here. It's an honor. And the first thing I wanna say and I wanna touch on is, this is not black and white America, from my own opinion. I know it's a strong opinion, but we are a culturally mixed United States, and it's hurt me all these years that I've been in the United States since nineteen fifty-seven, that all I hear is black issues and white issues. And we as Hispanics, I am a Puerto Rican, born, and I was raised in Brooklyn, New York. And yes, there is true what the young lady said. If you speak English, they wanna know why you don't sound like Rosie Perez. I've even been told I look like her, so I'm expected to speak like her. I am fully bilingual, and I advocate for my victims, which are women who are battered. I go to court because I'm a paralegal, and I advocate for juveniles. And I see the discrimination on children when you go to court. The children are not treated the same, the juveniles are not treated the same as the whites, the blacks, and the Hispanics are always told, especially the Hispanics. If you do not speak English, get yourself an interpreter. And if they go with a mother, which is usually the person I go with to assist, they are told that they need an interpreter. That is the purpose I take there. And I interpret for them, I also advocate. And I've been told by my clients, a lot of times, they go to court on the initial case, they go to court, and they're treated totally different. And then, when they come to our agency, which is El Centro, Social Services in Lorain, Ohio, they come to us for help, and I go with them and I assist them, and they always tell me that they get treated totally different when they're advocated for.
Wait, 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 wait. You mean, if they have an advocate, they do better?
Yes, they do.
But are they treated differently in what the judges do to them by race? Or are they just treated differently in terms of how they're treated in the court setting?
The setting. And at first, when they first come in, and let's say you have a juvenile that's only had a parking, has been caught driving without a license. In Lorain, you get a fifty-dollar fine, and possibly your parents have to pay for it. When you come in and you're Hispanic, I have seen children that are white and have gotten off easier than a Hispanic. They're harder on them because, I don't know if it's... I know it's a system because, I mean, I love my profession, but the thing is that the system will do...
But you do think that Hispanic kids can have a harder time in the court system?
Yes, I do, because I've been there and I know. My son was discriminated against because he was Hispanic. I've been discriminated because I've been Hispanic. And this was when I was on public assistance. I'm no longer there, but I worked my way up from welfare to being a professional. But it took a long time, you know. I took advantage, and I went to college, and I got my degree. But I know a lot of people, it's hard for because the system kinda keeps pushing you down. You wanna get off, but it keeps pushing you down. And unless you know someone, or you start knowing people in the community, then you don't get the help. And that's why we're proud of our agency because we help these people that are low-income move up.
Let me just say very briefly, one of the things that I like about the Chicago school experience, you heard me mention the Chicago school experiment, is they used to be known for one thing only. They had a teacher strike every year whether they needed one or not. Beginning of every school year, there was always a teacher strike, and there was a picture of the governor's school-aged child crawling around on the floor, playing games in the governor's office while the teacher strike went on. Now, what they're trying to do is to change, I think maybe the most important thing they're trying to do is to change the expectations, school by school, so that they have the same high expectations of all children without regard to their racial or ethnic group. If they get that done, I predict they'll change the performance results as well. But that's... anyway, I just wanted to support you for what you did.
Mr. President, you've asked that we reserve the last quarter hour of our discussion today to look forward and to see what might happen. And certainly, American business plays a great role in recognizing diversity. And the chairman and chief executive officer of the Goodyear Tire and Rubber Company headquartered in Akron is here, Mr. Samir Jabara.
Mr. President, before we talk about where we go from here, let me first say that I think the enterprise has a unique place in society to bring people together. Because unlike any other place, the workplace brings together people who pursue common objectives, they work to achieve common goals, they go together through similar failures and successes, and that creates bonds that really go way beyond whatever racial tensions may exist in society at large. So, I think that the enterprise really plays a special role and needs to play that role. But business enterprises are not socially motivated. I think it's also a very definite competitive advantage for companies to have a very diverse workforce. I was fortunate enough that I spent my career in a company where I have worked all my life in a very diverse environment. And if we're saying that the country around us is becoming more diverse, and across the country is more diverse, if we're saying that we work in a global economy that is more diverse, having a diverse workforce is definitely a competitive advantage. I can give you specific examples of what happened to my company. In our company, in the last two, three years, we were able to move much faster than our competition to set up companies in China, in India, in the Philippines, in South Africa, in Poland. And that is because we have a very diverse force. Our competitors were not able to move as fast. And we have gained market share. In a global economy, to the extent that you can relate to other people, to the extent that you have a diverse force, it is a competitive advantage. We can leverage this situation. And what we're doing now, in terms of how do we look at this for the future, what we're doing now is, we've stepped up our efforts to become even more diverse than we are. We're hiring now five times as many minorities as we did three, four years ago because we've realized it is a definite competitive advantage. It really is a competitive advantage. Now, having said that, this can only succeed if the corporation has values. And when I took over as CEO two years ago, one thing I did is I brought my leadership team together. We went off-site for two, three days, and we decided what values do we want to have for our people in this company? And we said we want three values. The first is integrity and honesty. The second is, we want a diverse workforce because we treasure and want to nurture a diverse workforce. And the third one is training and education for our people. So, I think that this is really a competitive advantage for corporations.
Well, let me just... I believe myself that what you just said is not only true, but is the answer to a lot of the next steps. That is, just as you heard all these young people say they thought that there was less discrimination among young people, partly because they all go to school together. The more people we have working together, succeeding together, doing something constructive together, helping their own families together, the less problems we're gonna have. I don't think there's any question about that. Let me ask you, before we run out of time, and I'll call on you next because you've been having your hand up, but I want you to think about this, and I want you to be blunt and brief. If we, if you, what do you think is the most important thing we should be doing about this issue today? What do you think, I should do it, or you should do it, or somebody else should do it? I'll try to call on as many people as I can, as quickly as I can. Raise your hand, the most important thing. You go first.
The most important thing I think that we need to do is, as a society, we need to realize that outside of dedicating our efforts to where the point where we do not tolerate racism, and we are, we look at it with utter disgust, and we put social dampeners or pressures on individuals who are racist, there are each and every one of us who has that uncle or that cousin who says that word every now and then that we don't agree with. But if we don't tell them that that's offensive, that language is intolerable in my family, and that that's not, that behavior is not permissible, we are guilty of helping and perpetuating that type of behavior. And I think we should be looking forward to our community's continuous improvement, and that's where I think we should be heading.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. President, I think it has to do with education. The Hispanic community, as you well know, has the highest dropout rate, high school dropout rate in the country and in the state. And collectively, we have not been able to answer that question. But I think that's the heart of the issue. If in our educational systems, if they can take the leadership banner that you're suggesting in terms of character leadership, in terms of really learning what diversity is about and what our differences is about, that that will make a big difference in the future.
We don't have to, we're gonna run out of time. We don't have time to talk about this, but I want all of you to think about it, especially the Hispanics here. For the last thirty years, Hispanics had higher workforce participation rates than African-Americans. And often left school to go to work to support the family. It was a real cultural thing. Now, African-American high school graduation rates are almost equal to whites, they're almost statistically indistinguishable. But the high school dropout rate among Hispanics is still very high. Apparently, for good cultural reasons, they think they gotta get out and help the family and all. But it's a disaster in the modern economy. We need to figure out what to do about it. But what's the most important thing to do? Go ahead, let's go back to the main question. Go ahead.
I'm president here in Akron, and I support that recommendation for education being the key to overcoming all of our problems in this nation. And I strongly endorse your Education Opportunity Zones. I wanna volunteer the Akron Public Schools to be one of the twenty-five that you're going to bring in. And I also strongly... I also strongly recommend that we put our emphasis with the little ones, the youngest of our youngsters, make them readers by the time they get to the fourth grade. And I think a lot will come along with that. We'll close that gap where we are underrepresented with minorities in high-level science and math courses at the high school level. We can teach them to read at the elementary level.
Mr. President, I don't, I have the personal view that I don't think that there's clouds in the sky because it's raining. I think that there's rain coming down because there's clouds in the sky. And what we need to do is open up that dialogue, and people need to be receptive. People need to realize that I can never be black. And somebody who is black can never be white or Hispanic or Puerto Rican or anything like that. So, what we have to do is put down our defenses, and even if that means risk being hurt, risking being hurt, and be honest with each other, and to, and then move forward so that that progress can be made.
Hi, Mr. President. I'm with the Coming Together Board. And one of the things we express to students is to go beyond their own comfort level, to talk to each other, and like learn about each other, different cultures and differences. To show that their cultures are okay, and show that you can get rid of some of those stereotypes by learning about each other.
Yeah, I'm with the Coming Together Program too. I just wanna say, it does start with yourself. Like, when I'm in school and my friends are having conversations, and one of my friends happens to say a racial joke, I'm like quick to tell them they should not be saying that. I mean, kids should be telling their friends they should not be saying racial statements. If my friend says the word nigger, I am the first person to tell them that is like not a thing to be saying, to be using loosely. I mean, those words are things that hurt people. Shouldn't be saying those loosely in school.
Yes, Mr. President. I think that if we're gonna have this dialogue on race, I think that what needs to be included is the underclass. I heard throughout the dialogue that the middle class has grown over the last few years, but the correlation with that is that the underclass has also grown. And I think that they need to be included in this dialogue.
So, what's the most important thing we can do for the underclass?
Well, that's what I was hoping to get from you. That was my question I was gonna ask.
I think, I'll tell you what I think. What we're trying to do is to reestablish vibrant, living communities where really poor people live. We're trying to mix housing now between middle-class and poor people in the neighborhoods. We're trying to give special tax incentives for people to invest, to put jobs back there. We're trying to make bank loans more available, and we're trying to overhaul the schools. I think you gotta put life back together, you know. This is, and it's an economic problem, and it does not exclusively affect minorities. So, it is not a race-based problem, although minorities are disproportionately affected by the large underclass in America. It's very hard to keep a country together if twenty percent of the people, no matter how hard they work, are still gonna fall further and further behind. Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity. This is a great opportunity, and I would like to talk about racism as being honest. Once we become honest with ourselves as far as racism, we can conquer it. What we've been addressing as far as racism in the past is the effect of racism, desegregation, integration, busing, affirmative action quotas and all that. But now, what we need to do is start getting to the causes of racism. And to me personally, I feel the causes of racism is two concepts or perception, white superiority, black inferiority. And I feel like it, a concept embraced by both races and other races that we must start addressing honestly and start working with culturally-specific programs so that we may learn from one another.
Okay, yes, sir, go ahead. Before we run out of time, is there any Asian-American here that wants to be heard? Go ahead.
My name's David Flores. I come from Lorain, Ohio, Yobai neighborhood. And one of the things I've got to say is, all the horror stories and the success stories go back to one thing, education, education with the family, education in the schools, teaching them the answers for why. Number one, we have to have schools that have money. You want educational programs, and maybe these people don't wanna hear it, but we got too much emphasis being placed on tax dollars to pay for it. Where do the tax dollars come from? The people. The people are tired of paying. We need some of the money that, and I'm not saying don't send money overseas. What I'm saying is bring some of it back to the infrastructure, to the schools. We have crumbly schools. We have equipment in some schools, but not other schools. But so, the primary thing I'm saying is education, but with the family involved. We've got to teach moral values back. We've got to bring the family back together. We've got to make sure racism goes away forever.
Very briefly, since I've been president, my education secretary, Secretary Riley, who is here with us today, has done a lot of work to try to support schools that introduce character education programs into the curriculum. Do you think that's a good thing? And do you, I gather what you say is you not only think it's a good thing, but you think that being, that the absence of prejudice is one of the virtues we ought to be trying to promote on a uniform basis throughout the country? And it ought to be part of the school curriculum?
Yes, exactly.
You agree with that?
I agree with that, but here comes the problem. You got administration against the bargaining units because they say there's no money to hire teachers, to hire more custodians, to keep the buildings open around the clock, have a principal that wants the buildings open for all the kids. We're fighting for space. In our neighborhood, we have buildings that were built in nineteen twenty-four. That's the bottom line.
Briefly, I tried to pass a school construction initiative, and I'm gonna, we'll come back with that in some form. But the other thing I wanna say is that there was money appropriated by the Congress in two different bills this year to give the school districts for after-school programs, partly because the vast... school districts for after-school programs, partly because the vast majority of juvenile crime is committed between three o'clock in the afternoon and seven o'clock at night, and young people need something positive to do, and this could be a part of what could be done. So I would, all you who are here from school districts, look at what the Congress did, I just signed two bills with two different pots of money to help the schools stay open after, after hours, so you could do positive things and get young people involved in constructive activities. Go ahead.
As an Asian American student, it's, I believe that institution plays a big part, and like, I'm proud to say I'm, you know, I, I was brought up in a high public school system, which for Mansfield City Schools, they showed how diversity was, showed various courses teach about cultural diversity. I think it's a big part because there's times where family doesn't get in place with young children because it's not implemented by their parents, and I think it's up to the school system to implement various sessions in which cultural diversity among different races could come down and sit down what they think it is. And at the same time, I think it should be implemented more in town meetings such as this, because once people leave a certain town meeting, they'll just forget about it the next day, are more concerned about their economic status, and I think it should be more, um, applied more in city.
Mr. President, we are at that point in the program, we are looking for you now to summarize the town meeting held in Akron, Ohio.
My summary's gonna be, I'll hear from two more people, go ahead. And the lady with the gloves, I like your gloves, go ahead, go ahead.
I was pleased that you mentioned the word immigrant, and your focus is on youth today. I work at an agency where we resettle immigrants and refugees. We also have a program that we work with youth, and we empower youth to also implement the program. I think what needs to happen is, we need to foster leadership among multiracial, multi-ethnic youth, especially as older people, and not feel intimidated by their success, because their greatness add to the greatness to this country, and their lack of success takes away from the greatness of this country.
I am your president here in the city of Akron of the ACP. We met in Pittsburgh, I'm a national board member, and I like the educational program that you set that day that you would like to have.
Go ahead.
I was pleased that you mentioned the word immigrant, and your focus is on youth today. I work at an agency where we resettle immigrants and refugees. We also have a program that we work with youth, and we empower youth to also implement the program. I think what needs to happen is, we need to foster leadership among multiracial, multi-ethnic youth, especially as older people, and not feel intimidated by their success, because their greatness add to the greatness to this country, and their lack of success takes away from the greatness of this country.
I am your president here in the city of Akron of the ACP. We met in Pittsburgh, I'm a national board member, and I like the educational program that you set that day that you would like to have. Every poor student or anybody that needed a two-year college education, you wanted to be able to give that to them, and I thought that was so magnificent. The other thing I'm hoping, and my superintendent here can attest to that, to getting into the history, a part of all the cultures throughout the world, so that we can learn at an early age from K through twelve, even if we go no further than the fifth, we can get a better perception of each other, respect character, and all of the concerns that we have as a race, and a great tomorrow, and a great America.
Thank you. Mayor?
I, I agree with most of the comments here today about education being one of the most important steps we can take. I think Coming Together by, in this dialogue though, is something by example that you've set for us that we can do throughout this country, and I think it all comes down to leadership. And I wanna thank you on behalf of the entire community for having the guts to take on this issue, to come out here, to take on various opinions, and to really lead, and I think that's what government leaders need to do, is lead by example. We're trying here in this community, I appreciate you coming to Akron.
Let me say this, we'll talk. I believe that education is a big part of this, and I believe that the economics is a big part of this. And I've spent most of my public life, more than twenty years, working on those two things. But let me also tell you, there are a lot of highly intelligent people with a lot of money, who still have bigoted hearts, or at least are insensitive to it. This is more than education and economics. That's why we're here. That's why I asked the two ministers to talk more than once, because I believe that, I agree with you, you know, it's easy, people get preoccupied with their own problems, but when this is over, you guys gotta keep doing this, and the people that are at these other hundred sites gotta keep doing this. This is not a day's battle, we have to change the way we live in America, and the way we relate to each other, because of the global economy, because of the workplace, because of the people that are in our own neighborhoods. We can't possibly answer all this. This, this, this sort of thing needs to become a normal part of daily life in every community in America, that crosses political, and racial, and ethnic, and religious, and every other lines. We, the, the society is too complex, too diverse, and, and it's changing too fast for anybody to be able to sit off in a corner and give everybody else a bunch of rules about how we're gonna do things. You have, this is what we have to do in America, we have to change the way we govern ourselves, literally, at the grassroots level to do this. I'm convinced, if you have more of this, I'm convinced we had four hours, I could sit here and listen to you all, I'd never get tired of it, and we would go on and on, and then you'd wanna do more, and that ought to tell you something. Everybody's still got their hand up, that ought to tell you something. We should be doing this in America on a systematic, disciplined basis, community by community, that's the way we ought to run our lives. So, one more, go ahead. Quick, everybody's gotta be quick, go ahead.
Mr. President, I think we should, one-on-one, begin to live the golden rule. If we each treat each other as human beings, and believe that we can individually make a difference, we can change this world.
I'd like to say, as a student leader here at the University of Akron, that I challenge all leaders on this campus, and everyone in this room, to go out and teach someone else about their culture, and about their heritage. And I offer myself, not as a representative of the black community, but as a member of the black community, to anyone who wants to learn.
Our moderator will either have a heart attack or cut me off in a minute here, go ahead, go ahead. Be quick, everybody, go ahead.
Mr. President, I think education is very detrimental in bridging the gaps, but I think most importantly, that the family role is very important also. Being raised in a very modest area in the foothills of West Virginia, having a very modest home, and a Christian home, I have been taught love, respect, and communication, but most importantly, love and manners, and I think that's important to pass to each other.
Mr. President, I think one of the very interesting things is this area of education. We talk a lot about increasing skills from the, the technical skills, the hard skills that we get in college and the technical schools, we talk a fair amount about the basic math, basic science, and so forth, but the part that I don't see getting much attention goes to the basic attitudes, and it's a reflection of our values. It's reliability, it's teamwork, it's good ability to communicate, it's the ability to realize that we have to continue to learn throughout our lives, and if we do that, the business community is gonna welcome the people that are prepared in those areas to come in, and we're gonna find we're gonna get more equality because we'll have people working side by side.
I guess what I would, I'd like to go back to what he said though, I think you gotta help us do that. There is a huge labor shortage today of people in the technical skills, we could do a lot, if you think there's an economic basis to racial differences in America today, there ought to be a national effort to train people who are poor and who are isolated to take these jobs. This is maddening to me, we, even though the unemployment rate's four point seven percent, there are hundreds of thousands of jobs going begging in America today that would immediately make people middle-class people. So, go ahead.
Okay, I'm Dr. Brown of the Coming Together Project, and I, I must speak on the things that Coming Together is doing. I think the answer is in the pain. We have to continue dialoguing, and that is the focus of Coming Together. We have to be able to put all of those differences on the table, be able to talk about them, and each side must have the opportunity to present their viewpoint. And I think, in the words of an intelligent man, the answer is in the pain. So we have to get to the pain so that we can solve those issues that continue to separate us.
I'd like to offer, offer a positive solution. Everybody, not just here, but in every situation that we all face, we need to look at the people that are around us, whether they're white, whether they're black, Hispanic, anything else, and realize that they may be different, but in that difference lies something that we can learn in them, we can find beauty in anyone, if that's what we choose to do.
I would like to agree with Shauna that it does start at home. I grew up in a pretty much all-white neighborhood, I did not have any black people in my graduating class, but I always respected other races. I'm Native American, but I've always respected every other race, and it comes to education in understanding the other races, and understanding their traditions, and understanding ours, and being able to respect that other person for their traditions, not just thinking, oh, they're different, so I don't want to know them.
Go ahead.
Mr. President, having attended predominantly black elementary, middle school, and high school, and then attending a university where I was the only black person in a psychology class of fifteen hundred, I can certainly appreciate the feeling of being alone in a, in a situation like that. And also, in that same university setting, having a roommate that broke out in hives when she discovered that I was going to be her roommate and I was black. I, I, with that in mind, I agree that it certainly needs to start in the home, it, the Cosby Show is not enough. It, it needs to start in the home, in terms of, we're talking about the people who are exhibiting racism now, or the people in the, in the forties, and then thirties, and, and the older, so we need to reach even some of those people, we need to start with more forms such as this, we need to start with community and civic organizations, we need to start in the workplace, and educating those individuals in the thirties, forties, and fifties, in terms of character, and, and what it means to be different, and the importance, so that they can start teaching the young people before they enter university settings and exhibit some of the behavior that my roommate did. Fortunately, it turned out to be a positive situation because she was brave enough to ask the questions that she feared, and, and so I think that ended up positive because I was able to teach someone.
Let me say, I'm very sympathetic with what all of you have said about your home environment, it had a big impact on me. So, you know, I mean, I had a grandfather with a sixth-grade education, who was a poor white southerner who believed in integration, you know why, I don't know why, but he did, and he had a big impact on me, so I agree with that. But I wanna say again, the, when you look to the future, you must, and we do all that, you must find a way to organize, that's why I like this Coming Together Project, you must find a way to organize a continuing mechanism where people of goodwill can come together and deal with this. But let me just give you an example, we talked about old people, young people, Denver is plagued, you've probably seen the horrible recent killings by skinheads of people because of their race. Now, Denver is a city that's only twelve percent black, that's got a black mayor. It is not a racist city, it's a remarkable thing. But even there, they have this problem, now they gotta figure out how they're gonna deal with this, and not just go prosecute the people that committed the crime, but what's going on in the community, how are they gonna deal with it, how are they gonna come together? I'm exhilarated by what I see from all of you today, but you have to make a commitment in some form or fashion to continue this in a disciplined way, because something will come up, things will continue to come up, and this is an ongoing effort, it's not just a one-shot deal. Yes?
Mr. President, I went to a high school that was sixty percent Asian American, and now I live in Akron, and one of the things I've learned is that the, the issue for Asian Americans is that we're considered foreign. I'm a fifth-generation American, and often when I meet white people, they say, you're more American than I am, and I wanna say, well, thank you, but that's not really news to me. And, I kinda, I wanna get back to what you started with, you, you asked about social segregation, and this is all sounding sort of very upbeat and, and easy, but this is hard stuff, and I wanna focus on the fact that we have to make ourselves uncomfortable, because if you look around yourself, and your friends are your same race, and the people you date or marry are the same race, you shouldn't be comfortable about that. And you don't necessarily have to enter into an interracial marriage, but you should at least be questioning, why is that happening, is that just a coincidence, or what's going on there?
Mr. President, I look forward to the day when the term "changing neighborhoods" will mean architecture, and where my grandchildren will not relate to the term hate crimes, and I think when we get there, we will have made great progress, and I think we can do it, but it's going to be very hard.
And what's the most important thing we could do about it?
I think that we have to make it possible for all individuals, whatever race, to be part of our neighborhoods and know them as human beings.
Mr. President, as a university president, I'm delighted with the comments here that have been made about the importance of education, but I think we have to remind ourselves that what happens in the education setting is very important. We may not begin by changing hearts, but we certainly have an obligation to open minds, and I think that's what these dialogues are all about, but we do have to, as so many have said, sustain it, and be very intentional about the values. The next century requires not only the high-tech skills, but it requires the tools of teamwork, and respect, and civility, and justice, and tolerance, just as much as it does those high-tech skills, and we believe in that.
Mr. President, we're being asked for your closing remarks on this program now.
I don't have any, my closing remarks are, this is the beginning, not the end. My closing remarks are that, that, that there ought to be a strategy to deal with the economic underclass, there ought to be, there ought to be a middle-class strategy too, that embraces people across different races. We have left open the question of affirmative action, just curiously, how many of you believe we should continue some sort of affirmative action policy with regard to admissions to colleges and universities? Okay, how many of you don't believe we should? What about out here? Change it what?
Racial preferences. Racial preferences, different than affirmative action.
That's right, racial preferences are, it's a loaded word.
Americans believe in affirmative action, they don't believe in preferences.
Abigail, do you favor the United States Army abolishing the affirmative action program that produced Colin Powell? Yes or no? Yes or no?
I don't, I've...
I get asked all these hard questions all the time, I wanna do it.
I do not, I do not think that it is racial preferences that made Colin Powell, the overwhelming majority of Americans want American citizens to be treated as individuals, and we've heard the voices here of...
Should we abolish the Army's affirmative action program? Yes or no?
We should. The Army does one thing very, very right, it prepares kids, it go, it takes kids before the Army, and it prepares them to compete equally, that's what you're talking about when you're talking about American education. Let us have real equality of education, these preferences disguise the problem, the real problem is the racial skills gap, and we ignore it when we...
Well, then, the real problem may be the criteria for why we admit people to college too, how we do it. Go ahead, one more here, and then Congressman Sawyer.
In terms of the racial skills gap, I don't think that that's very appropriate, because myself, I'm the president of the NHS chapter at my town much high school, I'm one of the top members of my class, there's not a racial skills gap, there's an opportunity gap, and that's what we need to address. And I would like to add...
No.
...a solution. A solution to that is look in your community, look in your school, at your workplace, and see someone that's hurt by racism, and then help that person, that's what you can do on an individual basis, and if everyone does that, the world will change.
I, I agree with that, but let me, to, to be fair to, to Abigail, now let me explain, no, wait a minute, wait a minute, I think this is important, I'm gonna call on Congressman Sawyer, but I think you all need to understand this about this, because this affirmative action debate, you know, that's all the press wants to write about anyway, they'll probably ignore the fact that we did the rest of this here, which was, and the rest of this is the important part that we did here. So, but let me explain what the difference is. The military affirmative action program does try to get results by race, but it simultaneously prepares people, so that if, what they try to do is they have these education and training programs, and then they hope when you go from lieutenant to captain, that there'll be a group of the captain pool, of potential captains, that reflect the racial composition of the lower rank as well. But they do prepare people. But they do prepare people. The problem is that you have different schools. When you go from high school to college, the college doesn't have control over the seniors in high school to do that. If they did that, then you could have exactly the same program, and we wouldn't have this anxiety. Instead, we have a system where we assume that the only reliable predictor of success in college is how you did on the SAT, or how you did on the grades. So the trick is, since I think our schools would be much poorer if there were no racial diversity, look around here at the schools here. The trick is to find a way of doing this that people believe is merit-based, and that people, so they don't think someone's getting something they're not entitled to, and not only that, knocking somebody out of a spot to which they are entitled. But there, I think it's very important, a lot of people have analyzed it. No one criticizes, very few people criticize the Army program. It's given us the highest quality Army in the world. The only real difference between the Army program and college admissions is that you're continuously in the Army program, whereas you go from a high school that may or may not be adequate into college with the affirmative action program. We need to really think this through as a country, and that's why I dropped the bomb at the end because we can't possibly resolve it today anyway. Congressman, you wanna go, and then we'll quit.
Mr. President, thank you so very much on behalf of this entire community for being here. What you have done today is a beginning, hardly an end. The kind of work that lies before this nation is the kind of thing that we've seen illustrated in this community. It has not been all success or all failure, but what we are doing here today is important, and it is important that we continue to try. There was a, there was a program on television when we were kids that illustrated historical events. It was called "You Are There." Walter Cronkite would open it every Sunday by saying, "What kind of day was it? It was a day filled with those events which alter and illuminate our times. It was a day like all other days, except you were there." That's the kind of day today we're experiencing here. And if we can take this across the country and gather together anecdote and essay on the kinds of topics that we've heard here, gathered from professional writers and people who may never have written a story before in their lives, and collect them together, we can build a literature of change and allow everyone in this country to experience what we've experienced here today. That's the kind of asset that we can leave to this nation so that when we are done, when you are done, after this three years of this initiative, that people will turn to themselves and they say, "What kind of time was it?" "It was a time like all other times that are filled with those events which truly alter and illuminate our age." Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I would like to, I'd like to thank our scholars, David and Abigail and Beverly. I would like to thank the students who spoke in the beginning and all the people on the panel. To me, this is a simple issue that has all kinds of complex manifestations. But the simple issue is, we live in a country that is the longest-lasting democracy in human history founded on the elemental proposition that we are all created equal by God. That's what the Constitution says. And we have never lived that way perfectly, but the whole history of America is in large measure the story of our attempt to give a more perfect meaning to the thing we started with, the Constitution and the Bill of Rights. And now, we have been given this enormous new world to live in with these enormous opportunities in which, as you heard our business executives say, "We do not have a person to waste." We're given a world that is much more interesting and exciting if we know and relate to people of different racial and other backgrounds. And it's up to us to decide what to do with it. Our country has never really dealt with the race issue before except in an atmosphere of crisis and conflict and riots in the cities. So a lot of people, I will say again, think I am nuts to be doing this. You know, what's the end? What's the point? The point is making a more perfect union. The point is proving we can have one America. The point is, it'll be a lot more interesting, a lot more fun, and far more noble if we do it right. Thank you very much.